Are we ready? Call meeting to order at 7:03. Roll call.
George Knoll.
Erica Harton.
Sean Harley.
Randy Snead.
Derek Downs.
Lisa Malaney.
Please stand for the place of allegiance.
The place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, from the regular session, I got the wrong date here.
Five, six.
Six months.
Sixteen.
Oh.
Five eighteen.
Five eighteen.
Prove the minutes for five eighteen.
We have a motion to approve in seconds to minutes from five eighteen twenty-two, regular session. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Citizens input, you are Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Would you like to tell me why you're here then?
Sure. I received a mail in the mail just recently, it was dated five twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, for my daughter Isabella Stoltz, that was dated for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The situation was, she was at basketball practice and I received a call from the head coach saying that her finger was injured, what did he want me to do? And I said for to have my oldest son, who was also at the school, drive her home, and I would take a look at it and determine if I needed to take it into urgent care, what have you, get an x-ray the next day. And so that's what happened. I guess in the meantime, someone else took it upon himself to call an ambulance. And so the ambulance came, I guess that's what this bill is for. Obviously, she didn't get in the ambulance or anything like that, I didn't know anything about it, I didn't call, the coach didn't call. So I, it's for a hundred dollars, but I'm requesting that. I was advised at the board by Ms. Malaney today that... So anyway, my daughter came home, I saw her finger, I reduced it, put it back in place, it's just a dislocation, so that's, that was the end of it. So I got this bill and I requested that, I guess it has to be approved by the board to waive this.
Because it was a bill for November fifteenth of twenty-one, the town council was in control of the ambulance service at that time. Had it been anything after January first, it would have been the fire territory.
Yeah, I was just wondering that same thing, thank you Lisa. I guess my question on that is, Derrick, maybe this question is better for you. When we transferred everything over to the fire territory, did any of that older stuff encumber, encumbrance to the fire territory as far as that, or is that still our, is this still our deal?
It would be our deal. Yeah, it'd be a clean break, I mean, anything two thousand twenty-one older would be.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how we done that, I couldn't know if we encumbered any of that leftover stuff over to the...
Nope.
Like we did.
I don't believe anything like that would go to the...
Okay.
So the way I understand this, when, if anyone knows anything different, Mark, I know you've had a lot of kids at school and your wife down there, but when students play sports at school, the parents sign a waiver saying if there's any medical that the school will contact, the way I kind of understood, they'll contact whoever and have them come and look at them.
So, yeah, in this situation, if you remember back, we used to never charge for refusals, and we changed that, things billing wise have changed.
Right.
So I assume that's what happened, is she's stating somebody called the ambulance and they ended up signing a refusal, but we obviously now bill for that.
Who signed a refusal?
Well, here's what, here's what I have, here's what I have, this is, this is by our lead EMT, says comments, patient was advised that she should go to the hospital to get finger looked at. Patient stated that brother called mom and does not want her to go by ambulance. Patient's response unchanged, complications or was none. So, I don't know who signed the refusal, but...
Well, whoever did wasn't, that's a reclamation.
Again, again, what the school is, what goes on at the school, they, they set their own rules and regulations.
I understand that, but I was called by the head coach of my daughter, saying...
Still by the school.
So anybody can randomly just pick up the phone and call the ambulance members and...
No, you're, you're kind of missing the point.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, that, that if there's a situation, like...
Well, then do you know who called, do you?
No, I don't, but I was told it might have been an assistant, I was told it might have been an assistant coach, I was told it might have been another student, because my daughter was crying, I guess, but...
But in this situation, I'm going to ask...
I don't know.
I'm leaning with her a little bit, if her daughter is under the age of eighteen,
Yes.
she's not allowed to sign a refusal.
And you depend the coaches on that.
So the coach shouldn't be there, so she shouldn't have been contacted.
And I was, and I was, and I said no.
But I meant for that, and she shouldn't have been.
That is in the report, I agree with you on this, I mean, that's in the, that's in the report from paramedics, the mother said, no, bring her home and I'll take care of it.
How old was your son?
My son is seventeen and my daughter is about sixteen.
You must have asked him to keep his age signed or something.
No, they still aren't legal age to do it. So that's what I'm saying, I was contacted immediately, immediately when this happened by the coach, to say Isabella's finger looks dislocated, what do you want me to do? And I said, and I said, well, don't have her drive, Jake's there, just have Jake bring her home. And that was the end of it.
We don't know who called the ambulance. According to the way I read the schools, or understood the school's policy, it'd be someone affiliated with the school that has to call the ambulance. I don't think they allow just any other kids sitting there dial nine-one-one.
I understand that, so I have two problems with this, number one, it's a legal matter. I did not, someone signed a consent that was not of age for, for permission for this, so that's the first.
These talking to the school.
Well, okay, but what I'm saying is, the second thing is, I'm being charged for a consent and an ambulance, and I'm not, never taken a...
You're, you're being charged for someone being there, where they, they didn't transport him, you weren't charged for transport.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I was, my, my daughter is in the coach's care, the head coach. So the head coach of that sport, that might, hold on one please, of my daughter that's there, with, it wasn't some random person or another adult calling me, or assistant coaches, my daughter is under the supervision, direct supervision and the responsibility of the head coach. So the head coach contacted me immediately and said, here's the situation, as a parent, as the legal guardian of your child, what do you want us to do, the school to do, what do you want done? And I said what I wanted done, that was a verbal order, that's what I did, and that's not what happened.
Can I just tag that here, please? Go ahead. First of all, we need to know who called. Right. So whatever happens, we need to find who called, we need to get the records, it's on, it'll be on recording. Right. Find out who called.
Requested by bystanders, right here in the report.
Right, but we don't know who bystander is.
So we probably never will.
Well, you gotta give your name when you call it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You have to give your name and your phone number so they can call you back.
I know it wasn't a coach, and that's Scott Jennings, so you can feel free to contact him.
So, so we need to find out who called. If it was anybody affiliated with the school, now, like I said, if it was just some kid called nine-one-one, then I'd pick out.
I mean, I don't.
I understand that. But if somebody from the school called nine-one-one and the ambulance responded, somebody is liable for that bill.
The coach was advised...
Or whether it be, that was a, there was no signed refusal because it was, obviously, she wasn't old enough to sign. So you couldn't make...
Obviously, she shouldn't have left without...
Right.
In that situation, I'm...
No sign, no refusal.
Well, no, there should have been a patient there.
It's right here.
What did it say?
Coach was advised he would have to witness refusal form and take responsibility, and the coach agreed. Refusal signatures were obtained and Argus Two went back in service.
Who signed it?
The coach.
Scott Jennings.
So it was Scott Jennings, yeah.
Which probably isn't uncommon.
Because he probably talked, because he talked to me and I said no.
And that's exactly what it says right here, it's like page of this report. It's pretty cut and dry to me, guys, I mean, this is...
What consent was signed?
Uh, refusal of...
I don't know, that's a great question.
There will be no consent.
You said there was a consent that was signed.
Well, a consent was given, or, that's what I was asking. If consent was made to what you just read, like somebody said, go ahead and go away.
Refusal treaty.
She's asking, I think, about the refusal.
Yeah, the consent, or whatever for refusal, I might have said it wrong, but who signed, who gave permission, who first got the ambulance there, and then who said the refusal, what he just read, and that's what he's...
That is not clear, it says bystander made the call to EMS.
There are like two things to my statement, was, but who got there.
It's all documented.
And then who, who did the refusal, which he was alluding to over here, and then he, you found it, where it did say that Mr. Jennings did it. So the coach took responsibility and said, no, we don't need it, and then obviously, it was after he spoke with me.
I understand, but there was anything illegal, I don't, it doesn't sound like any consent was signed.
Now, now that he said that, yeah. That's what I was trying to get to, like who's...
Well, there was no consent ever signed by anybody.
Right, I understand that, well, he's, he took responsibility for it, that's what I was asking.
He took responsibility for the refusal of care.
Yes.
Looks as right.
Because he talked to mom.
Yes.
So that may get to schools, they just don't, obviously, their protocol is to call...
Obviously, in Indiana, for that ambulance to go out, once they get to the scene, if they don't have a refusal, they have to take that person to the hospital.
Right.
That is, that is Indiana administrative code, that is an IAC code, not a, just our regular statute. So that's why they get refusals. Now, from there, who's legality wise, who's, who would have to pay for that? That would be a school question, but I'm sure you're going to find, once you get to the school, it's laid out in their athletic stuff, that they are not responsible for that stuff. So I, I'm just guessing, but that would, that would be a place you could start. Because we bill for all refusals, from their patient care, obviously, we've got a set schedule on what we bill once for transport.
So they initially been called prior to or during our conversation?
I would assume, yes, it sounds like somebody that was around that group called for an ambulance.
From what it states, Argus One was already at the school.
No.
It says it right there.
He was on scene prior to Argus Two.
Then Argus Two came for this, it says it, it says it all right there.
Yeah, but somebody, somebody from that group would have called for the ambulance. They don't just show up without...
So wasn't another person that was there, that, already on the scene that called for an ambulance?
It doesn't spell that out.
It just says bystanders, and when they called dispatch, it's one of those things that...
Don't hear any context.
So there's nothing you can do, you guys won't waive anything in a situation like this?
It's kind of out of our hands, because it being on a school property. See, that, we really have no control of the school or how they do anything.
But I don't owe the school a hundred dollars, I owe the town, Argus, or whoever this is, a hundred dollars. I owe you guys a hundred dollars. I don't owe the school any money, I owe a hundred dollars for nothing, when I gave...
Okay, Argus One went because Argus Two was out on another call, so somebody called EMS. One ambulance was already out, Argus Two was already on a call. So Argus One went, so they were dispatched from dispatch, from the station to the scene, there's, there were prior, there was already an ambulance out, so the second ambulance of ours left and went up there. The big thing is who called them, that's the whole question. The bill's legit, the bill's legitimate, because it's, it's just a billing that is done. I understand the concerns about why you don't feel like you should be responsible because of the fact you didn't do it, or the coach didn't do it, that's what we need to find out.
Yeah, it's just because I gave instructions for not, for it never happened.
I understand that, but what we need to find out is, was this call prior to the coach calling you and who did it? Right. That determines, yes, then that falls on my belly, but then again, Indiana Good Samaritan law, anybody call an ambulance if they see somebody in need.
Well, a dislocated finger is not a reason to call the ambulance, that's ridiculous, I'm just saying, I mean...
Someone thought it was, and we don't know who it was. And we don't know who it was.
I wonder why our healthcare posture is crazy, right there.
So who do we want to take responsibility of finding out who called, her or us?
How do I, I don't even know if I'm going out doing that, I mean, you know, they even allow me to have that record or to know, but it's sort of...
Well, if I can't do it.
Well, as I'm saying, I'm very familiar with that, but I...
Well, you're just getting a dispatch director. And it's not going to say, if it doesn't say on there, because that's probably what that lives from the sheriff's department.
Right.
So you're not going to find it.
So bystander calling, what is that?
I mean, here's my take, we're talking about a hundred dollars here, for something that I can see Ms. Stoltz's position, I can see our position as well, but we're talking about a hundred dollars. We're going to go to all this trouble to track all this down for a hundred dollars.
I think we should waive it.
That's my opinion.
A hundred dollars isn't the issue, it's the precedent.
I understand, I understand the precedence there, but the right thing to do, it's clear, it's in, it's in the writing of it there, the coach took responsibility for it, all the things that Ms. Stoltz is telling us are true.
Yeah, it says that you at home calling, and then them showing up to pay.
Yeah, we can go through all this and we still may never find out who called that ambulance. And that's just my take on it, guys, I'm, we're talking about a hundred dollars. If we give more money than that away for things that...
There's stupid.
It's, it's kind of interesting, because I could call the ambulance right now and say, Sean stroked out. No, I mean, the ambulance comes and like, who pays that bill for the refusal, because I called. And so is that Sean's responsibility, and Sean's like, hey, right.
Yeah.
I did. So it's kind of interesting, that refusal policy, and I understand, like, I, I don't know if as a player or assistant coach, or who knows, or when it happened. So just purely from a...
outsider's point of view.
Yeah, it's kind of, okay, I understand the reason for the policies, because, well, I mean, they heard gas, they went out, made the call, but I also understand that it wasn't the person that was injured, in fact, paramedics contacted and said, no, don't mess with it.
The person of authority, which was the coach, was, I mean, in writing, they're stating he was involved in that whole process.
Right, right.
I mean, but...
It's, I, I don't want to read more into it, but it's most likely not the coach that called in that instance.
I'm going to make a motion to waive the hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
More discussion. I have a motion and a second to waive the hundred dollars, any further discussion? Let's take this as a learning curve, that on this. We need to find out, when we get there, who called. If there's time, obviously, it's an emergency, it doesn't really matter who calls, but...
Yeah, I would agree with that, George, I mean, there should be a trail from the time the call was made by who on through. That is not there, it just says by bystander.
So it's kind of a school issue, like they should be talked to, if that was called, we, the doctors made the call, or it's time...
It could have been a member of the audience, so we don't know, school, I bet school don't eat down.
I understand that, thank you.
I agree with George, I mean, yes, not that it has a lot to do with the town council, now since it's the fire territory, but it's something that can be passed down to the appropriate liaison.
I'm going to just say, I'll be doing the same thing.
I know, I would.
Well, part of, part of the reason...
Can I just say something?
Yeah, you can change it.
I agree that it should be waived at this point, instead of patching it out over and over again, but I will tell you that if I call the ambulance and I say Erica's having a heart attack, and they get here and they see that Erica is fully upright and she's fine, they're not going to get a signed refusal because there was no injured party. Somebody let that EMT look at that child, and then they got the signed refusal. I'm not sticking up for the EMTs, I'm just letting you know what probably happened, but I do agree.
Well, I'll stick, I'll stick up for them for looking at it and treating it, I mean, and they were told...
Somebody, somebody let...
That somebody refused it, then that's fine.
Yeah.
We've missed one line on this thing. Argus EMS was dispatched to female with dislocated shoulder.
It wasn't even her shoulder.
Okay, so when, Argus Two was coming to previous call, Argus One stated that it was a dislocated finger, not a shoulder. That's why it was considered an emergency call, because it says right here, response mode was urgent, because someone says, yeah, it looks like it was a shoulder. Nobody did anything of my fault, period.
No, and I did read, and I did read that, and I, I found that to be immaterial in my...
Well, it's not immaterial, it, it's, it's why they went there, they just didn't go be going.
Well, they got a call to go.
Yeah. I'm just glad that we are discussing this and not just jumping to the conclusion of throwing it out or not.
But also...
This is what we need to do, unlike you, we don't need to spend twenty more minutes on it.
But also, after this call, hopefully, all the calls for last year are done, the fire territory board will be the ones making the next call.
I do think, in my personal opinion, for sake of discussion, that, that should be passed down to the fire territory. I mean, they should make every effort to paramedics when they, you know, to find out who actually made the call, so they can put that in their report, it was, they may not always be able to get that.
There's motion on the floor. All right. So we do have a motion and a second to waive the hundred dollars, and we've had further discussions, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye. Motion passed, three to one. Thank you. How was she?
Thank you. Mine she came home that night, and I, I have it on video, they recorded it, and I put it back in, and that was the end of it. She had to rest for a little bit, but I was, fortunately, but they did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Whole business, attorney report.
Hey, not too much tonight. I sent you guys an email last week about the sidewalk issue, if you remember, Mr. Van Dyne was here and talking about tables and so on and so forth, we've got a whole code devoted to this, it's chapter, or I'm sorry, old chapter, it's chapter ninety-four of the town code. And it basically says, if you're a, a business owner, that you can set things out so long as the sidewalk remains freely passable. And that's kind of the, when I read that, I'm like, okay, well, I think it would be helpful to, he's not here, but to basically say, okay, if you want to set tables out, you know, at least leave X amount of feet between the edge of your tables and the sidewalk, if you don't want to do it, okay. But it, it does say that so long as it's freely passable, so just instead of leaving that wide open, and I'm not saying change the town code, I'm just saying, in this instance, help to find out.
I read that, they're basically saying a single person walking, they're not talking about two people side by side, you just have to give enough room for a person to walk.
It says freely passing, that's all.
Yeah, freely passable, I mean, it doesn't, yeah.
That's open to interpretation.
Yeah, it, that's a twelve, who looked it up last month, I think it's a twelve-foot sidewalk, is what it looks like.
He said it was sixteen, actually.
Okay, sixteen, so if you'd leave three foot, you know... You're going to use six foot up, you'll have ten foot on the sidewalk. You're only, he's only putting a single table person here, person there. But he has to put that little fence.
Yeah.
He has to put a fence. Yeah, so you're butt up against the building, you got a two-foot table, and you got two foot here, here, four foot, that leaves you the rest of the room probably.
What's, what's the ADA consider the proper clearance, I don't know, I'm just thinking...
So you get your questions here.
That's one thing, is it four, four foot, six foot?
It doesn't say.
Forgot about that. It just says permissible.
It's four foot.
Passable.
Passable, I got it.
Is ADA four footed?
Four foot.
They got to be able to turn, is what I was told. Because after I read Derrick's email, I kind of thought that Derrick might be asking us for some guidance, maybe to make that less open for interpretation to maybe, so there was some kind of definition there.
Well, I think it doesn't happen often, but I think when somebody comes, then they're saying, help me out, so I don't get in trouble, and I think that's appropriate, that's good. So giving some guidelines, and I think it's just simple voice folk to say, you can have tables out to X amount of feet on the sidewalk, you guys fill in the blank, and leave at least four feet.
I would be very comfortable making it within the, you know, keep the open part of it within ADA guidelines, that's...
Four feet. No, and feet...
Well, I mean, if that's four foot, then that's, I'm okay with that, is what I'm saying.
We have to say it.
Maybe, I don't know, but...
We should say it at feet.
Say it at feet, no more than one-third of the distance of the sidewalk.
You've still got to say it at feet.
You have the distance of the sidewalk, no more than one-third. That gives you your feet if it's a twelve-foot sidewalk, if it's a two-foot sidewalk. Talking about one, one particular business, I'd give a number in terms of feet.
That request.
No, I just looked it up, he's right.
Four foot, okay.
It'll cost twelve hundred bucks to get that.
Well, I'm not, I did it in my own, sorry.
So we don't, I make a motion that we allow Mr. Van Dyne to put the tables up, leaving four foot of passage past the tables in the edge of the curb.
I'll second that.
He ran them on a four foot. We have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Van Dyne to put tables on the sidewalk as long as he leaves a space of at least four foot between where he's going to be and the curb. Any further discussion on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So we'll have to get ahold of him and tell him.
The other thing is, guys, I sent that, I'll call it a draft letter regarding the annexation. I think I sent that Friday. And so this letter would, in theory, go out to the three property owners that would be on our island if we did want to do the annexation, certain to Mr. Snyder's request. Obviously, the letter's not gone out, I'll let you guys see it first, make sure that you're okay with the way that letter was written. If, if you're okay with that, then I would send that out to Mr. Dunlap, there's a LLC, and I think a Thayer is either the property owner. So guys, I'll get your letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Micro motion, Derrick, send the letters on.
I'll second that, after, I apologize, I just kind of reading the letters.
So we have a motion and a second to, uh, allow Derrick to send the letters out to the property owners for the annexation, annexation problem, or down on Dewey Street. Any further comment on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the last thing I had was, we had some tax abatement CF One forms. Start with the easy one from MPa, and this was something that we did back in twenty fifteen to declare that an economic revitalization area, they're about seven years into this, and they put their form through, I didn't see any issues or problems with it. So I, I, again, don't have any problems with the town granting that.
Micro motion to accept the MPa's tax abatement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept MPa's tax abatement form, any further discussion on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Randy, you will need to sign that, Lisa, you need to attach it on the second page, you're in line with that, so... The other one was from Indiana Tool Manufacturing Company, Matanco. They sent through their CF One, they also gave us a copy of their business tangible personal property assessment, and I hope they turn that into the assessor, I don't know, but that's where that goes, but that looks... But, that's where that goes, but that looks kind of original, but, I don't know. But, for what they're supposed to do for the town, they, they, they did fine. I think this is the last year for this tax abatement, and, again, I didn't see anything that's terribly out of line, it's been granted for the last nine years. So that was, there's that one for your consideration as well.
I make a motion to accept Matanco's tax abatement form.
I'll second that one.
Have a motion and a second to accept Indiana Tool's tax abatement form, any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 And just so you know, we got one more that was from Top Industries, but I just saw this thing this evening sitting down here, so I haven't had a chance to go through that. We can take a look at that, we got forty-five days to consider this, so. Take a look and let you know at the next meeting.
Well, they, we've seen that one, you haven't.
Yeah, this would be year three or four. Probably three, I think it was done in twenty twenty.
If you're saying, have you seen what has been filed?
This year you haven't.
I, right.
Because there's one, I'll scan it, we'll get it to you, this, he hasn't seen it yet, because we, not questioning, but we just want to make sure that it's right.
I, I know, I've seen the other two that we passed, but I don't know that I've seen that one yet.
Oh, the last thing I had was that the Moore Property, um, the last meeting we said that that work was done, so set it for hearing, or hearing June sixteen. I'm gonna need probably Chief Bowman, he's not here, I know, but somebody to come testify, yeah, yeah. So, code enforcement, I think would be appropriate. June sixteen, at NAMU.
I'm not going anymore.
You wanna do it again?
No.
That's all I had to report.
Motion passed, attorney report's read.
Motion and a second to pass attorney report, any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other old business? Do you have anything, if you're just here to?
I'm just here to observe.
Okay, that's fine. Anything, Mark, that we left out?
Hmm, not pressing, no.
Lisa?
No, not right at the moment.
I do have a question. What, what is allowed running a business out of your property, such as a retail space?
He's asking, because today I got a call from the Marshall County Clerk, um, saying that he had reported an, uh, a violation on East Marshall Street, um, of somebody running a business, so I have turned that over to Chuck, and I gave you guys the email. It should've come through, if it didn't, you'll have to let me know again, but, um. Anyway, um. It's something that we're looking into, and because it's in our two-mile zone, the complaint should've came to us, not Marshall County, they don't have anything to do with it, that's why they passed it back to me. So, um, I will give you the information, and then you can look it over. But technically, if you're asking if a business is allowed to run out of their home, no, not unless they are a B one or B two zoned.
Well, we, we're getting a lot of traffic from that.
So, they are allowed if they get a variance, such as you did, you know, and you have ag property, so you got a variance to run your installation business. They can do that, they can go in front of the BZA and run, um, but I also need to look into, the owner of that one has an established business here in town. So, he has just taken it to a different side of the street. So, we need to look into that, because he already has an established business.
That, like cats.
Yeah, well, join the rest of the neighborhoods in town, we all have cats.
My wife and I are taking a little bit, getting them fixed. We fixed eight of them in the last big swab. I mean, I don't know what else to do, we're just getting them fixed.
I'm sure his fix is different than yours.
Not my wife. She turns her head, what she got to do.
It's not your fault, they die of the blood, it's just like, the kids can't eat it.
Randy, it's a federal offense to kill a cat, let's not tell me. It is, I'm just like.
I was told.
According to rabbit, it is.
Yeah, we can't kill rabbits, either.
Really?
Well, you can during rabbit season. If it's webbing season.
I see James' run, I'll show them.
I was told that by a police officer, that it's a federal offense, so I just wanted you to know that, so.
To kill cats.
Yes, I was told by one of our police officers, so.
I just.
I'm not gonna say that.
Just.
Okay. Where's Roman tonight?
I don't have any old businesses, if you're asking.
Okay. So, new business, any, any new business? Anybody got anything new? Jamie, anything new? Everything's going good?
I don't know if it's going good, but there's a lot going on.
I can see.
Trucks everywhere, and dump trucks, and.
I see all these, uh, now, we're, this is through our grant, that they're doing the.
Bathing.
The, and the little curbs.
Yep.
Yeah.
It'll probably be another four to six weeks, I'll be in town, getting everything done, but they gotta get started on it already.
You see Church Street.
Yeah.
That's all I need to be.
Yeah, they all need to be done like that.
That, that's, is why I, I couldn't.
Talk to curb and gutter.
Oh, yeah.
Bother and gutter sidewalk.
While we're talking about Church.
It is nice.
Put in your mind that that lady that's been parking there, that had to park there, is it parking there? So when she comes back and wants to park there, just keep that in your mind. She obviously has somewhere else she can park.
Well, she's parked in the driveway now.
There you go.
I saw it this morning.
But she hadn't been.
I know, she's always parked out there, she had.
We did that because it was winter.
Huh?
It was winter when we did that, too.
Yeah, well, that could've been, yeah.
I, uh, Randy, I guess I got one thing on, the twenty-seventh of May, we received an email, from, I believe, Jamie, on, uh, a letter that Norfolk Southern had sent to the town, do we need to have a workshop to discuss that by any means?
What I, what I'd like to do now is just that, just say, go ahead, keep, keep digging into it. If that's something you want me to pursue, that's where I'm at.
I think that there might be some, I mean, yeah, I, I think we need to do some fact-finding on that forward, but I, we haven't discussed that yet, I thought that maybe we should at least bring it up.
Well, this will come up.
Oh, they've done that before.
We're gonna try to use this with the whole.
We've done that before.
No, I know, but we got meetings coming up, I got the notice of one today, he didn't know about it yet.
No, I saw it.
Okay, for the road out here, so we're gonna have to start working on all of that, plan in general, so.
I mean, if we can bundle something in there along the lines.
That's what I'm thinking.
That'd be advantageous to us in the long run, as a community. I think it's worth maybe doing some research on it.
Because I'm seeing.
We, we went through this on two other crossings.
Well, we have, we have a workshop on the next meeting at, uh.
But I'm gonna tell you right now, when you start closing out crossings, you can't get to the other side of that track, that money ain't worth squat.
Stay real gentle.
If. If.
And that's not the track we're talking about, we're talking east west. Government comes in here and throws big money at, they got something for them, not for us, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I still think it's worth looking into. Don't cost anything to ask questions.
No, you know, the other thing, if we're talking about it, they could shut it down with.
Nothing.
Nothing, so, they're thinking about it, that's where they're at.
Yeah.
And then I helped some of the semi-traffic, stay off that road, too.
Like the one I watched come down Pond Street the other day.
How big do we have to make them signs?
They, they, their GPS is bringing them to that corner, and they, there are few of them are seeing it, because I was out there the other day, but they're still wanting to make that turn.
That sign, you cannot miss it, it's, I mean, it's a nice sign, it's huge.
Well, they, you know, every now and then, if one's awake, give one up to the red light. But, you know, uh, they better know how to read and write and speak English, that's part of your test. And if they can't do that, they don't do either.
Give them a lesson, really.
So is that the end of, uh, the new business then? Alright, we'll go to claims. A lot, we've, we've got claims to Bob's Lock, and another key place, uh, what we.
I had to rekey, um, a door at the reservoir, we had a new door put on that, and I think the other one was for the park, I don't know, we just needed some keys.
Yeah, said park's keys.
Yeah, we, we just needed some keys, we only had a couple made, so we need some more.
Hey, the claims for six one, um, these actually only go through five thirty-one, because I had to get the docket to you before the first. So, um, the claims total one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Now, who's gonna ask me why did we spend a million dollars?
Exactly.
Because we can't.
We didn't spend a million dollars, we invested a million dollars, but because it has to show up as a payout, um, that's why.
I figured, I thought it was.
You went over budget.
So, the, the interest rates came up a little bit, they're over one percent, so, I got with Jamie, and we went through all the stuff, and we're just trying to make some, a little bit of interest off of some of the money. So, we did buy a bunch of CDs. You'll also see a claim in your packet for, um, uh, gift baskets that I purchased, and they are for my conference that is coming up, I will not be at the next meeting. I was able to finally find, thanks to Davis Farms, um, I was finally able to find a local company that produced something that I could put into a gift basket, and I can pass out at, with all of the clerks in, um, the entire state, it'll say this one's for Argus, Indiana, so, it's actually two gift baskets, because I'm going in candies, going in, I'm taking that out of my budget, if you look. And it is actually not very much money, it's. But we also, um, featured Davis Farms in our biz in the five oh one, so, I thought that was a good plot for them.
At least ask if those investment stuff show up in the itemized part.
They do.
Do they?
Yeah, they're in their Lake City bank.
Yeah.
Oh, I look, okay, I got it.
Now, that money's not gone, it's just invested, you know, so that I have to show it out of the account, so.
No, I get it.
Out of one, yeah.
I give you the investment sheets when they come in, and let you know where we're at, Jamie keeps a close eye on them, too, so.
I was just, I scrolled right by it the first time, I was like.
I did, too, I said anything, I'm like, boy, wait a minute, I got, I missed something somewhere.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the claims, as read, from five seventeen to five thirty-one.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims from May seventeenth to May thirty-first. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Claims are passed. Along the line, Erica.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.